All right, everyone, please rise. Before we do the pledge, I'd like to take a moment of silence for our recent loss of our student Aiden Alexander. Off the call. Gary Yarlos?
Here.
Leah Rulo?
Here.
Chris Ravish?
Here.
Bonnie Holstein?
Here.
Augur Worchek is here. Katie Gruh-Worchek?
Here.
And Brad Judy, President. Well, I guess we had a lot going on, but I know we got other people that are gonna speak on behalf of sports and everything else, so I guess I just commented Tigers are still rolling along. That's looking good. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? See you in nine.
My motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Okay, pardon? All of them in favor? I oppose. We have comments on the agenda. I see none. None to ISD twenty-five, twenty-six budget presentation.
Hi, Mr. Dewey. Got several pieces of information. Some is in your board package, I handed out two pieces. And most of you I know, but for those of you who don't know me, I'm likely the superintendent of Bayern Air and Act counties. I've been there for three years, and this will be my last, but I've had three great years there, and previously was here in Pinconning. But today I'm gonna go over the budget that we've adopted. We're gonna actually have a budget hearing coming up sixteen. But as you know, the budgets right now are up in the air, anyone's budget, because the House, the Governor, and the Senate have really no, they're all going in different directions, so. Long time ago, a friend of mine, former board member here, Tom Bader, for always said, "They're just black dots on white paper when you're looking at budgets at this time of the year, because really they're subject to change." And that's what you're looking at right now. But we built some assumptions in based on what we do know, and looking forward, I'll go over those numbers. But before we go into the numbers, I want to start with just a couple of highlights on some of the programs that we do. We work with Pinconning. As you know, we work through Bay and Air and Act counties, but I'll just hit a couple of these highlights. I know you have a long agenda. Your agenda looks pretty robust, so I'll keep it short. I know some of you know I can go be long-winded, Mr. Yarlos, was that my first board meeting here, what, fifteen years ago at least?
I could tell them.
I'll keep it, I'll go the Reader's Digest version. But just take a look at the list, and as you go through here, these are some of the things, and it's really been good working with Andy and the administration here. It's good to see everyone here, but really taking advantage of the programs that the Internet has to offer. And the great start, GSRP program is the first one we list, and then that goes into career and technical education. GSRP is really strong throughout the county, and Gretchen Wagner is our early childhood director. She does a fantastic job. She's also connected, well-connected at the state level. So when there's things that are looking like there's changes, she tries, she does stay on top of them, and if you don't know, they've started a new department in MDE. It's called MyLeap. It's actually, it's a department that focuses on early childhood. It actually goes all the way through lifelong learning. But MyLeap is a brand-new department that overseeing great GSRP, and there's a really big push right now for universal preschool. So everyone three-years-old would have something, then go into GSRP for-year-olds, and then go into kindergarten. So there's a really, there's a lot of emphasis from the Governor's office to do that, and they've set some parameters in place, and we're trying to stay on top of those. Career and technical education. When you think of that, you think of the Career Center. We have great Career Center programs. But career and technical education is, looks different throughout the ISD. Standish has some CTE programs. We have CTE programs here, but they're really, they're not federally funded, but there's also State Street. So there's different types of CTE that we have to support throughout Bay and Air and Act counties, but you know that the Career Center is our major focus, is what we do. And I know a lot of students, I'm wearing my green and white tonight because I've seen in the paper, and I've seen firsthand at the Career Center, all the winners that we've had from Pinconning, also our fine arts, industrial arts. Have been doing a great job. Athletics, it's been a really good spring. So proud of it to see that the programs are in such good shape. Special education, if you look at that bullet, special ed is our biggest part of our budget. It's our biggest, it's our biggest department by far. We have a very large special ed staff. As you know, they come in, we have itinerants, we have supervisors. They've worked with all of the schools, including the charter schools. So special ed is really our biggest, biggest department, and probably it is our biggest budget. Some of these other things I'll gloss over, but things that impact students here in Pinconning, the Imagination Library, Math in the Mail, those are things that you wouldn't think the ISD is responsible for, but those are things that we push. If we didn't have, we do a lot of fundraising. In fact, I was in a dump tank to raise some dollars for the Imagination Library, and we ended up raising like four or five thousand dollars. But that money that supports all those books that go to students, newborns through five, really is funded locally. It's through, we've done, there are some state dollars, but they're not all here, they're not always there. So we have an endowment through the Bay Area Community Foundation that helps support Imagination Library. Same with Math in the Mail, it's a program that helps students in Bay and Air and Act counties with early math resources. I'll jump to the second page again. I'll keep it brief. We've been working with Town Together. I know you, everyone knows there's a teacher shortage right now. Town Together has been a very good program that we, again, have, in collaboration with the other fifty-six ISDs in the state, have worked with, and Mr. Kowalczek's been working with that in three.
We had three and one left, so we have two right now in the program.
But a very good program. We're starting to see more and more teachers come through the ranks, and this is one of the programs that has really helped. And the last thing I'll hit on, and I know there's a lot more, but again, our adult ed program, we graduated over a hundred students this spring. And as I saw the students walk across the stage, there were multiple Pinconning students that took advantage of either their GED and/or their diploma. It was kind of nice, because one of us, it was a former student, I had the opportunity to hand the diplomas out, and those familiar faces were good to see after I had maybe crossed paths long ago. So just know that adult ed is very strong and vibrant at the ISD. Any questions about services we provide? Okay. The other sheet you have in front of you basically outlines what we provide as far as the number of students you have in GSRP, how many Career Center students, how many special ed personnel we provide in Pinconning. Again, it's more F for your information, but it kind of gives you a scope of what we provide to our local districts. Any questions on that piece? All right. I'll go over the budget. Again, this is in your board package. Julie Muggs is our business manager. She will normally do the numbers part, but I feel I've seen these enough times to be able to go through these. But if there's a question that you really have that I can't answer, Julie will definitely reach out and help you. The first budget that you want to look at is our general fund, original budget, and then you'll have our. Twenty-five, you'll want to see, look at the, yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six. And they, yeah, they sent these out. So if you'll notice through the general fund, general fund is really a lot of our GSRP, it's our instructional services, but one of the things you'll notice is that our general fund has a pretty large surplus, and it has a fund balance of around thirty percent. Big number. Right now, the average fund balance in the state of Michigan for schools is around twenty-five percent. This is a little above that, but this program, we've been keeping some money back, because this is a lot of our thirty-one N counselors, some of our literacy coaches. So we know the state might cut back on some areas, so if they were to pull the thirty-one N people away, there's enough cushion in this budget to sustain that for a year. I mean, there's the ability to sustain it for a year, maybe two years, depending on how many we keep. So it's not just sitting there. It will be used if it happens to be, you know, if they cut those programs. You have a question, Gary?
Yeah, is there a board policy on your fund balance requirement?
No.
I didn't think, no maximum?
No maximum, no minimum. Our special ed, when we get to our special ed, there is a twenty percent. Anything over twenty percent, special ed goes back to the locals. So we've been paying that back to locals now, since I've been there, maybe even when Dedkadish was there, but I'll jump to that budget in a minute. But as far as on the general fund side, things are looking very well. Again, a lot of this money is actually earmarked in grants and categoricals, they call. So it's a little bit risky, because you're looking at money that it's, they might not choose to have that program, and we talk about it at our superintendent meetings. It's kind of hard to budget when you really aren't a hundred percent sure they're gonna be able to sustain the program, but I can look out in the audience and say thirty-one N counselors and literacy coaches, those are really needed, and they need to be really not just in categoricals, they need to be in the budget. And that's where a lot of those fall within that general fund budget. Any questions on that? Special education, again, I mentioned it's our biggest budget. It's a thirty-five-million-dollar budget. If you put all the parts together, the ISD has about sixty, we oversee about a sixty-million-dollar budget. Our fund balance is just around twenty-one percent, but what we do, and I know Pinconning has received sixty thousand, somewhere in that ballpark. Okay. We'll call, we pay back, we've had the same amount recently, pretty much for all the schools in Bay and Air and Act counties. We've given back whatever in the excess of twenty percent is to, and it's been a pretty consistent number. One of the reasons why is it's, that budget has been pretty consistent, and it also allows for locals to actually look at their budget and say, yeah, this is kind of what we've been getting year in and year out, so it's kind of more predictable. So that, Gary, any other questions? And that isn't really a state rule. That's really a local decision. Some ISDs do it a little different, but we've done the twenty percent since when I was superintendent here. That's what would come back if there was an excess. And believe me, there wasn't always a time when that money came back, because the budget got, if Medicaid gets, if there's some, you know, if you look ahead, as I started out, if those Medicaid dollars don't come in, there could be some serious cutbacks to some of our special ed programs, because some of those services are funded through Medicaid. So that would impact our special ed budget considerably, but we don't know what that looks like, so we're not gonna speculate, but if you see major cuts to Medicaid, you might see cuts to the special ed program.
Can you explain a little bit about our special ed programs and our students versus the ISD? Because sometimes it seems like I have board members that will ask me, "Well, why doesn't ISD take care of that when they take care of other special ed things?" Is there
Well.
rules on what special ed things you, the ISD, can cover?
You're, I mean, it's really kind of, it is, there's a plan. There's an ISD plan that we have, but our plan indicates that the ISD is gonna cover things like itinerant services, speech, PT, OT, all those specialized services, we employ those people. We also, we also provide for center-based programming. Center-based programming means, if you've been out to the Bay campus in Essexville, it's for severely cognitively impaired students, very, very high-need students in that building. We have about a hundred students, maybe a hundred and twenty-five students that it's, they're severely handicapped, and we basically staff that, we run that. Now, as far as students within your local programs, those would be serviced by your, like, students in special, up in Pinconning who are special ed, your special ed teachers would provide those. Now, we do provide supervision, so all the supervisors within the county, we employ them, and they work with your staff. Again, that's kind of the, it's a model, and that's kind of how, what we've done. I haven't changed it in the three years I've been here. Does that kind of help?
Yeah, yeah. I don't remember. I mean, I just know over the past year or two, something will come up, and we'll talk about, you know, why isn't that an ISD special ed program when others are? And I kind of say the same thing, that we have our own special ed programs, but there's also ISD programs.
Right, right. And again, the itinerant services are a big push, and then there are certain EI classrooms that we have that are center-based, but we go throughout the different districts, and we rent rooms, and we appreciate the fact that Pinconning actually allows us to rent the rooms, because you're gonna hear, and you probably continue to hear, least restrictive environment, and that's giving students with special needs, giving them the ability to access general, general education. So if they're in a building, even though they might not be able to go out and receive general education, there's a chance. And so sometimes you'll have a classroom, we have classrooms in Lindwood, where the students start out in a ISD center-based program, and then they will start to meet their IEP goals, and then they'll be able to transition into the general ed for a portion of the day. Could be BE, could be art, could be music, could be math. Pinconning is, I'll say Pinconning, because I'm here, but you'll get a portion of that FTE as well, so when that student's in a classroom with Gen Ed, they'll be funded for that portion, so it's one-fifth, or one-sixth, whatever it might be. So that is part of the least restrictive environment, and Andy requested, we had a discussion, Suzanne Masters, who was our special ed director, is scheduled to come here, maybe right before the school year, so you can, you can get an idea on some of the changes. We just had an audit from MDE. They came in, and they had stakeholders all across the ISD. Things like least restrictive environment were talked about, things like disciplining of students with special needs, access to extracurriculars. I mean, there's a whole thing that they look for when it comes to auditing your programs, and we did well. There's some areas of growth, but I think if Suzanne were to come in here and at least answer your questions too, because I know, I know firsthand that special ed and a lot of the discipline and some of those things, just people don't understand, but there actually, there's a lot of rules that the federal government has, that the Michigan Department of Education has to adhere to, and when they start to get sanctioned or get in trouble, then it boils down to the ISDs, who then have to work with the local districts to say, "You have too many students who aren't taking tests." You know, you have to have ninety-eight percent tech. If you don't, then you get, you get a compliance issue, or if you suspend too many students with special needs, they're gonna come, they're gonna see those numbers, and they're gonna, they're gonna request the ISD to investigate.
So besides the money side of it, why, where can we go if we have problems with the program, that the student's not progressing in the program? If we look past the money and say, okay, this is failing our students, and it's causing disruptions in our school, where do they go to, to address policies that are not working?
So I guess I don't understand exactly. So a program, so a student, are we talking about agendas or a special?
A student that we had here that we had to expel due to behavior issues that came from the ISD programs, and there was nothing that could move him back into the classrooms where he was being successful in. And instead, we just had to give up on him and say, "Good luck, and see you later."
There is a process for that. You know, normally it would be, once that student started to struggle in the gen ed, you know, if they put him back into a program that was, if they struggled, there is a process for that, plus the IEP team should agree, I can't speak on specific.
Well, all of those things were done.
Yeah.
But the issue is that the policy isn't working. So where do they go if they have a problem with the way things are set up, because they're not working?
I guess, I mean, that could be a state question. I mean, it could be the MDE, but apparently.
Okay. So not to the local ISD?
I mean, you can come to us, but I'm confused as to whether you're talking about a Pinconning student in a Pinconning special ed program, or you're talking about an ISD student who's in a center-based program?
I don't know.
For example, as a student for one of our students, you referred, you got a specific example. He was a Pinconning student.
Right.
Yes.
But he was an ISD student that was moved into the classroom.
And I will tell you, you would go to the ISD if there was an issue there, because if the student wasn't successful in a gen ed setting, or in a special ed outside of a center-based program, there's an avenue to go back. And I will have, and if you want to, if you want to dig into that, I've heard a little bit about that situation, but there would have to be an IEP, there would have to be a behavior plan that would be examined, and those types of things.
I guess my military training's coming through, because if something doesn't work, we figure out why it didn't work, and then we figure out how to make sure we don't go back to that conversation. And so that's why I'm concerned about it. It's like, where do I go to, to make sure that this doesn't affect another student the way it did that student?
You would go to Suzanne Masters, who was our Director of Special Education.
Okay, thank you.
I think most importantly, what you're asking is that our administrators are equipped to be able to handle that situation. Know where to go to, right? Because it's not you specifically.
Right, right. I just want to make sure that people have that situation.
Our people need to be trained.
Right, and there's training every fall, and that's one of the things, that's why, honestly, that's why Suzanne is gonna come, and if you have questions, she'll be able to answer those.
Okay, so.
But I would ask that, I would ask that you, maybe Mr. Kowalczek, reach out ahead of time if there's a specific, you know, we don't want to talk about it in a public meeting, but if there's a situation that needs to be reviewed.
Oh, no, I just want to not revisit that situation.
Yep, absolutely. Good question. It would be, our special ed department would work you through, walk you through that, because I think Kara right now is, is she part of the, yeah, so we would go there. All right. The last budget we have is the Career Center budget, and the Career Center budget is doing pretty well, and I will tell you, the Career Center right now is, has been, the programs have been outstanding. We did, we didn't, we haven't added a specific new program, but we added careers in healthcare the last two years. This would have been the first year for it, and that's really helped out. It gives us students another avenue, it gives them a second year of becoming a nurse, or there's different, there's different certifications they can reach, so that's helped. Our new director, Josh Little, is really good in CTE. We got him from the SAGNA ISD, and he is not SAGNA ISD, because SAGNA Career Complex is not an ISD-run program. There's his run by the city. But Josh is really dynamite. He's worked out. He's gonna, he's come and talked to the superintendents quite a bit, and I think he's gonna do really well in that role. That fund balance, again, is right around twenty percent. The Career Center budget is probably of the three, the one that has, is getting the most pressure, because we have the ability, we, you know, that's based on, that's a levy, that's a millage that we assess throughout Bay and Air and Act counties. And because of that, there's some headly concerns right now, where we can't, we can't capture all the funds that we levy, so they have to roll that back. So there's about three to four hundred thousand on the table that we can't capture and put into our programs. We would have to do what they call a headly override, and voters would have to, have to agree to that, and that's been talked about. So it wouldn't be any higher taxes. It just wouldn't be, we would levy, be able to capture all the money that we could, that would go to the Career Center. So, and now ISDs have Career Centers, and some don't levy mills, it's, but we're fortunate enough to have that. We're having a Career Center, we have a millage to support that. So in a nutshell, the budgets are looking very good again, but again, with money being, there's some uncertainty ahead, I think we're in a good spot looking forward. Any other questions, or? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda.
We'll do, approve the consent agenda, pay bills, go one million, five hundred, four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Motion? Or any other discussion? Off the call. Off the call. Gary Yarlos?
Yes.
Leah Rulo?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Bonnie Holstein?
Yes.
Augur Worchek, yes. Katie Gruh-Worchek? And Brad Judy?
Yes.
On to communication.
Thank you, President Dewey. First, I wanted to thank our retiring staff, Ms. Revard at Central, Ms. Holmes at the High School Middle School, and Ms. Cloutier at Lindwood. It was great having them for the many years that they were members of Spartan family, and they're gonna be missed. Sometimes tough replacing all that experience and knowledge, but we'll do our best to make sure we get the right people in place, but thank, thank you to our retirees. School Resource Officer update. We have it in the non-consent agenda to pick a school resource officer, a program, and I know we have our administrators who were able to talk a little bit about this also, that was Mr. Ravish wanted them to talk. But just a few things that I wanted to give you. Some we may have already discussed, some may be new. But the, if, going through the county for the school resource officer, it's six and a half hours a day. Pinconning schools would have access to the staff and officials at the sheriff's office, which includes the detective bureau, their command staff, all of their records, and additional deputies when needed. Other county departments that we would have access to would be the Bay County Finance, Bay County FOIA, Bay County Corporation Council. Personnel are always available to assist and answer any questions. Now, most of these things we haven't needed, we haven't used in the last two years, but they just wanted to make sure I knew that when we go through them, more comes with that cost than just our school resource officer. Our costs in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year was fifty-six thousand, just over fifty-six thousand. This year, it wasn't completed yet, because we have the true-up and everything, but it was at, expected to be right around sixty-four thousand. And then they did have an increase this year due to insurance salaries, and they also found a mistake that they had the first two years, and they said, "That's congratulations. You've got a little more than expected." With the twenty-five, twenty-six school, or the budget is around ninety-five and a half, but that's expected with the true-up to be eighty-five. So on paper, you would see that it was listed as ninety-five. They said expect it to be around eighty-five, but we could have stuff happen, and it does. That's the highest. Pinconning police cost for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, twenty-five thousand, and that's for Central, in the middle school, high school only. They cannot support Lindwood, and that's for six hours a day. I was told today by Chief Spencer that they are able to go outside of the city and do home visits if needed, if it has anything to do with their school job here. I had not heard that before. That was the first that I had heard that, but he said, "We can't, you know, check people outside of the city limits with the radar, or do things, but if it's part of their job here, they could." I asked if that would also mean they could help at Lindwood, and they said, "No," because that's kind of like waiting for something to happen, where if something had to have happened, where then they could go support it. I also checked on the security company for Lindwood. If we would go with the Pinconning City, what it would cost, twenty-six and a, twenty-six dollars, fifty cents per hour with a four-hour minimum, would probably be around twenty thousand dollars for a security officer, who would not be school resource officer-trained, be able to work with kids. They would, you know, sit at the door and be security, check the parking lots type thing. I did request a quote for the county sheriffs for the twenty hours a week for the school resource officer for Lindwood, and support the district with other concerns like the home visits, and was told, "No," that they would not be able to supply that like they have in the past. And next year, there is grant money available to pay this fee. So with the services through the county, you know, that's something that is big, because if it was eighty-five thousand versus twenty-five thousand, and it's our money, that's a lot different than when it's grant money, and it can be paid for. So that's, that's what I had for information for you, but I did want, if it's okay at this time, to have our administrators talk and give the little presentation similar to what they did with our Personnel Committee a month ago. They're all playing.
That's Susanna.
Come on.
We'll see. We're doing this to the album.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on, John. We won't make a stand. No, so the board has worked on this together. Someone, Chris, asked us to speak and share what we spoke about at the Personnel Committee meeting in April. So we just came up with a bulleted list of things that our current SRO does for all the buildings. So we'll just go through it, and if it's something Lindwood-specific, I'll, I'll jump in and mention that. Okay. Oh, you start.
Okay. I think one of the base things.
Okay. I think one of the biggest things is, and I, I mean, I spoke in our Personnel Committee meeting pretty explicitly about how important it is that we've been working with the county, just everything we do. I think the two biggest things are the consistency in communication we have, not just with Matt, but just in general as having the county there. Just the phone calls, knowing that they will be there. They, anything we've needed, they've been there instantly. We've been redirected from the city as well to go through the county. So just, we know that we, it's a reliable source, and we have leaned on them more times than we can count this year. I don't know how we would have made it through this school year without having the county with us. Just, I mean, being in the know in our situations, whether it's here, whether it's our students in our, you know, our check wells, but really just being able to be visible in our entire county. We have a lot, we covered a lot of ground. We know that in our district. So being able to get out and really support our families, which in turn support us and be able to partner with that is, really can't put a price tag on that. You just think about some of the things we've gone through, even with our whole response team and having that partnership. We have, we have a lot of emotionally charged families and children, and so being able to rely on the county to be able to get those services is huge. We can't replace that with anything. And definitely those county resources that we have, drug dogs, I mean, that, that's a big one, being able to come in. Obviously, we know vaping is a problem. You know, having an officer here every day with us, forming those relationships with kids, being comfortable around them, makes that process a thousand times better because the kids trust that it's a process. Whether or not they give that up right away is obviously a whole different thing, but having that support there, you know, being able to do the checks, having the county resource available is, that's, again, that's a pretty big thing, especially at the secondary level.
I'm gonna jump in there for the elementary level. Having the same person consistently in our building has been extremely helpful. All the kids know our resource officer, and you know, if, if it's not Matt, then it would be someone else. It's that consistency. They're there. They're in the classrooms with the kids, giving classroom presentations, talking to the kids at lunch, playing with them at recess, just building that, that a positive relationship with our students, coming to our family night events. It's been extremely, it's been extremely nice.
I just want to touch on some things that, like, for me, this is less about which agency like can or can't do things, but more about what our experience has been for me for the last two years working with Bay County. That's my only experience, but these was, you know, just some of the things that have been kind of pertinent in making sure that the safety of the district, but also the safety of Middle High has been in place. She touched on communication. That's really, really important. There have been several situations where whether our SRO could or couldn't respond, he was always willing to be able to communicate with administration beyond his contractual hours, like into the night on weekends. A huge part of like assisting in drills, helping debrief after we do lockdowns and different drills, helping kind of create more efficient and effective procedures during drills. We've had a lot of CPS situations where, again, he's been, SRO's been integral as far as like mediate, you know, mediation between them. Different interviews that have had to take place with other agencies with our students and families. No trespassing situations. He's willing to jump in and help with that. We've had students that have had to be escorted off the premises. And the fact that he's there and able to help assist with that situation takes a huge way off of us. Again, consistent with, with our student body, been able to build relationships, doing classroom visits, presentations and discussions, helping at our lunchtime is really important because the start of the day, at the end of the day, and lunches are really and passing time for us. We have, those are our biggest issues in bathrooms. So having camera footage, watching, and then just having that male presence in law enforcement around to be able to step in and figure out where to do that. There have been many occasions where the three of us have been in a situation in the hallway where we've had to go three directions immediately. And because we've built that relationship, we just know, like, we just know without even having to say, like, who's gonna take care of what, prioritize. We just have that built, which is really important. We've had a lot of tragedy and emergencies in the last two years. Obviously, the major accident that Dr. Brown probably will touch on as well. A year ago, we had three runaway middle school students in the middle of the school day. And I just think about the agencies that, that were able to respond. Bay County and State Troopers were there. We had to rely on not only law enforcement on foot, but we had canines that had to come. And actually, a helicopter came out towards the end of that situation as well, and that was really important. Okay to say, we get a lot of calls, and it's usually the county that responds to those. And again, our SRO is the first one that will be called, and even if he can't respond, he will continue to communicate with, with us. And again, that's almost always in the evenings and out on weekends, over summer break even. We've had lots of students under the influence, substance abuse. We've had things where we've had, you know, liquids need to be tested, pills where he can call and he can look at. Lot of student, family and staff situations where our SRO has had to defuse and has done so successfully. Issuing tickets as needed, locker searches and seizures, just being familiar with things that, you know, we might not be familiar with, just being in law enforcement. Lot of cyberbullying. That's probably one of the biggest things we deal with at the Middle High level. And I know that our SRO specifically right now has had additional training as far as investigating cyberbullying and being able to navigate social media a lot more effectively than we can on our level, even with our tech support with Jay. He's been able to do a lot more with that. Our SRO happens to serve on the active assailant committee for Bay County, which is really important to be a team member of that. And then just participation with the emergency operations team here with our district as well.
I think the biggest thing, I mean, especially just those weekends, I get a lot of our, I get all of our Dela Dayo updates. So kids are suicidal, drug use, abuse, those things. They come right through my email. They flag those, those words. And I've had several situations this year of kids threatening suicide, and so my direct contact is through the county, and so they can go directly to that. There's been a lot of families and lives saved this year because of that direct communication. And I, I just have to thank the county in general for the accident last week. They were on-site immediately and communicating with us through that entire thing. Not anything we ever want to have to deal with, but the fact that they were available every step of the way, communicating with me so we could communicate with their families and put their crisis team together was, I don't know how we wouldn't have done it without them.
One little thing I do want to touch on as I'm reflecting on another situation that we dealt with this year. I won't get into specifics with that, but as you just heard from Mr. Doobie, special ed, least restrictive environment, seclusion and restraint, there's a lot kind of under the microscope right now. And, you know, if we're in a situation, sometimes there are students that are out of control. And sometimes, you know, they have the ability to be able to cuff students in a really, really unsafe situation. And we encountered that this year, and that really helped in what could have been a very unsafe situation, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna leave you with, Linwood loves having county deputy at our building. Can't imagine not having.
So the last thing that I did also want to, to talk about, and it is a difficult decision. You know, with our Pink Hining Police being here over the summer, on weekends, at nights, you know, where they are here, that's another thing that Chief Spencer wanted to make sure that I did put that out there as well, which is nice. And, and he said, we will always be there even if we don't get this contract, but that is, you know, would be nice to have that same person at all times. My concern is, I, I don't think at this point, with it being paid for by a grant, that we can let Linwood be out there without anything. You know, that's, that's a big thing.
Does Central have something?
Yeah, that's all the same. The school resource officer can be.
Officer in the building.
No, no, we have one that goes around to all four buildings with our Advancement Academy, with the, in, the Pink Hining Police can't, would not be able to support Linwood. So, you know, that, that's where we are. Difficult decision. But until we find something with Linwood, you know, for Linwood, I don't know how we can go away from it, especially with how great the service has been, you know, with our, with our county, so. Any other questions for me about that? And you, there'll be more discussion possibly at the non-consent also. Year-end wrap-up. Just wanted to let everyone know that we had a very productive last week of school. Occasionally, you know, you can have concerns or hiccups, but as far as what happened with exams and school itself was a, a nice, smooth end of the school year with our academics. The next thing is the driveway repair that we have discussed previously. We actually approved a blacktop quote where our driveway has been crumbled, and we were asked to have someone look at it for concrete instead of just blacktop. So Jeremy is here, and I asked him if he would be able to explain a little bit, you know, if there were any questions. But the blacktop is from the road way further out. You know, how far, Jeremy, do you know? Is it by the softball?
Just past the fence there.
Okay, where the, the, and there were two spots within the, two spots that needed attention within the parking lot as well, right? That was that quote. At first, I seen the quote, and the cement was cheaper than the blacktop, but then that's what he said, it's much longer, and there's two spots. So what did you find out about the concrete? Does anyone think we needed the concrete versus blacktop?
So that'd be up to you guys. I mean, do you guys want to put a concrete pad in there?
Is it needed? Because it's, I mean, that's the question, you know?
I don't think it would either. Full at all.
Okay.
Do you know why it crumbled there?
I don't know why it crumbled, but the asphalt company said they would dig into it and see if there was something down there that may have caused it.
It's just weird that this year it did that, where it doesn't, you know, if it was every year where it's always crumbling, like, ooh, we got something going on underneath or something, but it hasn't, and this year.
He did say he had a lot of.
Really?
It was a rough winter.
Yeah. So that was, you know, if there are any other questions, and that's on the non-consent also, so, you know, they, there could be more discussion on it. But at least I wanted to give you the information that I had for that with the blacktop. Board members' certificate.
It's on the consent?
It's not on there.
It's on.
Oh, it's not on there?
We already.
We already approved the black, right?
Right.
So if we wanted to do something.
Right.
We would hold up. Yeah, you're right. We already approved it, so it's not on there. So stay with it and, okay, great.
Stay with just the black.
Yeah. Very good. I have two certificates that were sent to me to present to Mr. Brad Doobie from MAS B. The first one is a word of merit, and that is for Level Two, completion of certification of Level One and a minimum of forty-five education credits. And the second is a Certified Board Member Award, having completed the course requirements for Certified Board Member through MAS B, and there's nice little pins on them, so I wanted to present them to Mr. Doobie. Congratulations. Position update. I am happy to have listed Mr. Keith Kaplan as our recommendation for Business Director. We had many qualified candidates. Mr. Kaplan has served as the Beaverton School Business Director for the past four years and has a wealth of knowledge and experience. The Bay, Bay Area ISD Business Director, Julie, and Mr. Yaros, and I attended the interviews, and we all agreed that Mr. Kaplan would be a, a good fit, and we are, I mean, pretty excited to have someone with the knowledge and experience that he is bringing. So I wanted to let you know on that. We needed to have two contracts for him approved. As you've seen, there were two contracts, and here we're wondering why. Because we would like him to start before July first, if he can, even if he gets in five, six, seven days. And that other contract is a prorated per day contract, and then his contract will start on July first for the full year. So that's why there were two. We do still have the postings for the Teacher Athletic Director that had a June sixth deadline. Curriculum and Grants Person is due tomorrow. MTSS Elementary, that closed on Friday, and High School, Middle School, AP MTSS is June tenth. Now, we know that we have discussed these. I feel very confident that our new Business Director will be able to give us some input on hiring these positions and the impact it will make on our budget. He seemed very good with those sort of things. So I think we at least got the resumes for these, and if we want to move forward with interviews, we can. I didn't want to wait until we get the new business person, and now we're into August before we've been interviewing. So we have a good set of, of applications for each, and, you know, that'll be the board's decision in looking at the grants that we'll be paying for some of these. Some of them, like the MTSS Elementary, will be fully funded by a grant. That's an easy one. And the other ones are partial, so I'll keep you on the loop that and see where we're at with those positions after I talk to Mr. Kaplan, if he is approved and we come up with a good plan, because we don't want to put ourselves in a place where we are, you know, taking out too much of our fund balance, and then we start letting people go after that. We don't want that. State Street Academy Agreement for Alignment. If you remember, it's, it's one of our new board members would not remember, because you were not here, that last year we had an agreement with State Street Academy in Bay City for a portion of our students' FPE to go with them. It's kind of like the Career Center, but they have their own very unique program for alignment, where they get many certifications and they're, you know, ready to go work after school. And we had two students that did it last year, and I can't see how many this year. But this agreement allows our students to go into that alignment program after the half-day, just like Career Center students. Nice opportunity for our students. Let's see, Saginaw Tipewatt Indian Tribe, the two percent grant. The list of grants approved are in your board packet. Some of the highlights, we did receive twenty-five thousand dollars for our softball seating, which will help that budget a little bit. We had AP Test Relief, which is great for our students. They, I had, my daughter, when I was gone, had two, you know, it's, I think it's around three hundred dollars a test, isn't it? Do you know? It's only ninety? Well, I guess with two kids, and multiply, must have been a total of three hundred. But this grant, this now allows those students to take it and not have to worry about money. It's paid for. So that's, I stole that from our neighbors to the north. They do that. They, they hadn't done that before, so I thought we would try it, and we were successful. So that's nice. Our robotics room has a nice grant that helped that. They've been doing a lot of work in there, updating that room. So that was nice. And then Renaissance Awards, our Renaissance program that twice a year has a celebration for our students who are doing all the right things, behavior, academics, attendance. This also helps them with some of the treats that they get and prizes and certificates, and it can go for many things, so that was nice. And that's a small portion. You can look at the other things with that as well. I do want to thank our staff and the personnel who came to Pink Hining High School from Standish and ISD the day after Aiden was killed in the car accident. Just to let you know, Aiden's funeral is this Thursday. You probably have seen that in my communication. I've been in contact with Aiden and Haylen's mom. Haylen was waiting to transfer to a rehab facility for her leg, but doing much better. When I talked to mom last, at the end of last week, she was, Haylen was sitting up in the chair eating a popsicle, and they were very happy that they did not have to do surgery on her clavicle. They thought they were gonna have to do another surgery, but they don't. So that was great to see that. But yep, we're just gonna continue to keep that family in our thoughts and prayers. Middle School Soccer, there's a letter in your packet and also on the non-consent to approve. Middle School Soccer, there's a letter in your packet and also on the non-consent to approve a middle school soccer team. We've talked about this for many years. I actually, probably four or five years ago, when I was not in Pinconning, it started up in the Bay County Schools. And I was talking to the A D at that time about maybe getting it for Pinconning. It, it's good for our athletes, it's a club sport where we do not have to worry about payments of any kind. I think it's a really good league for parents also because it's just August, it's two days a week, each week of August. So kind of a cool thing to be able to get out and play some of these very good schools around us. You know, to have eight dates to play soccer, so. Wanted to give you that and if there were any questions, you know, now or at that point when you talk about it, you can have those as well. Congratulations for our baseball team on reaching the quarterfinal for the second year in a row. Making it to the final eight is a major accomplishment, we're very proud of that team. You know, it was funny, cause at the same time, our golf team was competing in the state championship in Grand Rapids. So like Mr. View said, some really cool things have been happening around here lately. And then our student-based health center is now open. Monday, Tuesday and Thursday from seven thirty till four. Kind of unfortunate, they opened up the last day of school where now our students are gone, but parents can still bring their students to that if needed. Treatment for illnesses, immunizations, hearing and vision, behavioral health services, they have. You know, well, with child exams, especially if you don't have your own doctor, it's a good place, you know, to, to go and they can help find that. Personal doctors too, so we're excited to have them open and being a partner.
Uh, Works for Administrative Staff.
We, I don't think we've had a meeting since graduation, so I just wanted to thank a whole lot of people. Graduation was wonderful this year, the weather turned out great, it was a little, we thought it was gonna be a little chilly, but ended up being great. Thank you to all of our board members who were there. Mr. Stumbeck who does so much, so much behind the scenes to get everything up and running, it's so wonderful working with them. Mrs. Hines, our secretary in the office, this was her first go around with that and just phenomenal, so much work. Mrs. Winger and our yearbook students taking pictures and just being available for all of that. Really need to see them get involved as much as possible. And Mr. Ryan Cooley for coming in and, and doing our sound, that was so nice to have someone just there. And knowing how to do all the things, cause that's always the first thing to go. So just great, it'll be really nice to have that set in stone for Sunday for next year, we don't have to move that. Just wanted to echo what Mr. Polczek said about just the thank you surrounding. Aiden's passing. It's probably one of the hardest things I've had to do in my career yet. Continues to be the only hardest thing, which it won't be. But just the people power coming in and taking care of things immediately. We had eighth grade graduation that night and just being in contact with Deputy Capo about all the things. We had, Mr. Polczek and I had met. The life flight out on the football field in the, the Hamptons and just seeing just the people immediately. And Northern Bay was there, I know we contracted with them and so just seeing familiar faces, knowing that our people are gonna be taking care of us very. It settled things a little bit more, but just that constant contact and then, you know, once we found out devastating news, just getting into action. Getting crisis team together, really leaning on our mental health support and everyone just coming together for that. I also wanted to thank Board Member Rulow just for being there in the morning when I addressed staff on Friday morning. Never easy, our teachers care insurmountably about our kids. And we see that every day, we get to see that every day. But unfortunately, when tragedy strikes, you, you really see how much our people come together and lean on each other and support and our kids do the same. It is, it's one of those weird moments of you're devastatingly and profoundly sad, but at the same time profoundly proud. At our people coming together. So just thanking our, our teachers and staff for just really always being there for each other. And just everyone for just really coming together for the community and, and taking care of our own. So just very proud to be. I'll go next. So I don't know all of the details, but I know that we did have two middle school students, Maggie Heistit and Mason Ozer competed, I think, this weekend. In the middle school state track and field meet, I don't remember what the outcome was.
Mason is first place in the high jump, it's amazing.
It's pretty awesome, when he knew he was making it, he came right in my office and told me he was gonna be excited and like. Pressured me to make sure that it got into the announcements. They are very proud of themselves and I wish that I did congratulate them in person today, but. Eighth grade graduation was a success, it was a, obviously a very tumultuous evening. But again, just very proud to be a Spartan and to have the support that we had. With the families that came to support their students, we had a pretty good showing of families and students that evening. It took place at the Cheese House, started at five o'clock with dinner and awards first. And then the students were bussed back to the middle school gym where we had a dance. So I just wanted to thank Lee Adok with the Cheese House for providing us the meal, they did a wonderful job. Always enough food, it was just a, a really great meal. And then Rock and Write, DJ Entertainment with Ryan Cooley, he sat over again and they did a great job with the music for the kids. The middle school yearbook documented this, the event and it was just really nice to have that, it's our first year having a middle school yearbook class. So I'm having students and seventh graders actually were the ones kinda taking pictures so they have somebody to look forward to for next year. Eighth graders ended their semester with a few field trips, they had lots of fun, a lot of. Learning moments, which we're definitely taking into consideration to help just make the trip section be even more successful. Sixth graders were able to, and every year, any student with passing grades and no discipline in the fourth marking period, were able to enjoy a reward day. Out near the football field with pizza and soda and ice cream. We've got some staff supporting that situation as well, and we're just looking forward to planning it for the fall. Yep, unless you wanna hear about field day. Great, great end of the year.
Any else you could hear me?
And on to the non-consent agenda. Yeah, item A, ISD twenty-five, twenty-six budget revenue.
Take motion to adopt a resolution support of a Bay Area ISD twenty-five, twenty-six budget as he presented.
Or, any other discussion?
Here, Yaros?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Lee Arulow?
Yes.
Bonnie Holstein?
Yes.
Augur Verchak is yes, Katie Verchak?
Yes.
And Brad.
Yes.
E, it's the middle school, high school filter for the grant project.
I move to accept the quote from J and D Plumbing and Heating for the middle school, high school filters first grant project. Cost not to exceed twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Support, any other discussion?
Bonnie Holstein?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Here, Yaros?
Yes.
Lee Arulow?
Yes.
Augur Verchak is yes, Katie Verchak?
Yes.
And Brad.
Yes.
See, the S R O contract.
Accept the recommendation for the placement of twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six student resource officer.
Should we say what? I think we need to say what organization.
What were your recommendations?
Yeah, Bay County covered all the bill.
Bonnie Holstein?
Yes.
Lee Arulow?
Yes.
Here, Yaros?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Augur Verchak is yes, Katie Verchak?
Yes.
And Brad.
Yes.
Okay, I'm D, the middle school soccer team.
I move to accept the formation of a coed middle school soccer team starting. By the high sixth school year.
Do we have coaches serving you for that?
They're not, how reliable are they to think for that? Who's using our name?
Yeah.
Are they gonna practice our stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, I wanna reveal what they can. Absolutely.
Some other discussion? All votes in favor? Close? You know, this one, I think we act like Gary Doos too.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so it's item E to approve the employment of Heath Kaplan as the business director. First one was due as a motion to.
I accept the, let's see how, I'll accept the contract for employment. Of Heath Kaplan as business director, starting July one, twenty-two-five and continuing through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Motion? Your motion support, any other discussion?
I.
Three of us sat in with the gentleman.
I mean, he had, he was ready to go that night, he wanted to dive into the bucket, get things going and.
We didn't even offer him a contract.
Right, he was ready to go.
Yeah.
He called my office and placed an ant.
Yeah, he did, he asked us about.
He apologizes for not being here tonight, he had to present the budget at Beaverton. Uh, personal reasons.
Any other discussion? Hey, Volko?
Here, Yaros?
Yes.
Augur Verchak is yes, Lee Arulow?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yeah.
Bonnie Holstein?
Yes.
Katie Verchak?
Yes.
And Brad.
Yes. I'm gonna do the second.
And then I'll approve the contract. For the term. Looking for that term.
Six days, prorated six days.
Prorated six days for the end of June of twenty-two-five.
Uh, six days at the total would be two thousand, two hundred and sixty.
That's correct.
Motion support, any other discussion? Hey, Volko?
Here, Yaros?
Yes.
Augur Verchak is yes. Lee Arulow?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Bonnie Holstein?
Yes.
Katie Verchak?
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
And now, E, superintendent contract and renewal of the L O I.
I move to accept superintendent contract renewal and L O I as presented.
Motion support, any discussion?
Congratulations, you had a great evaluation.
Thank you.
Kinda saying that some type of logic that I. Contract negotiation ever did, we said, no, there's nothing went through it. And we worked through separate, this separate contract there for, I mean, days that you may need for surgery, so. We, when I ask these.
Get yourself well.
Yeah.
Any other, anything else?
Hey, Volko?
Bonnie Holstein?
Yes.
Lee Arulow?
Yes.
Here, Yaros?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yeah.
Augur Verchak is yes, Katie Verchak?
Yes.
And Brad.
Yes.
Takes care of that. Thanks, right?
All of them.
All right, public comments? Discussion items. First, Matt, we know it's, it would be you coming back in. Tech Rigger, do you get to come back in or you gotta fight it out again?
I appreciate.
Yeah, you don't have to fight, right?
Oh, yeah, no.
I don't know, I thought I was part of the deal too.
Yeah, we get them, we get them.
Do we know our kindergarten numbers for this coming year coming up?
They have preliminary numbers, but it always goes up as you get closer. I, do you have tentative numbers right now, both of you? I can give a few.
I'm just sorry, what are we gonna do with Ms. Rebarik's position?
We have to fill it at this point, I mean, we talked already about, can you put classes together?
Okay, you're looking into.
Yeah, already looking into it.
Okay, that's, and then I just wanna thank whoever did the graduation dress code this year. The graduates looked wonderful. I was not embarrassed for one of them, so thank you whoever took care of them.
I feel like we were a lot more hands-on this year and maybe just the nature of this year, but it, we had a really good group of seniors.
All the shoes and everything looked great, thank you.
I wanted to, when we're doing thank yous at the end of the year, I just have to congratulate the maintenance staff for the way. Whole facility looked on graduation day. During playoffs too, all, all the, all this, all the.
Tracks.
Visitors we had. Actually commented. Facilities are looking really sharp, so. That's off to our new leader.
Yeah.
And one other thank you, wouldn't want to forget the journal for the end of the year support. Highlighting our students.
Yeah.
Week after week, thank you.
With that, Kim, I will get, I don't know if you're going to take care of for the fall conference, I'll send you the dates. Whether you're going to take care of, you know, booking rooms or if you're gonna get with.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out, yeah.
I'll, I'll just shoot you the dates and, and I'll, I'll go with these guys. That way they can get these.
Yeah.
Keep going on their class. Anything else for you guys? Nothing, then I need one more motion.
Motion to a jury.
Motion support, any discussion? All votes in favor? I oppose.
Did you say this even got approved? Bonnie, Bonnie, more for the turn, who supports?
Actually technically a motion to adjourn, that only has to be.
Oh, no support.
Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome, yeah, yeah, you're welcome.